Six o'clock, and so we will call to order this regular meeting of the city of Crescent City here on Monday, May the first, 2017. Would you please call roll?
Councilmember Follman.
Here.
Councilmember Greenow.
Here.
Councilmember Keim.
Here.
Pro Tem Short.
Here.
Mayor Inscor.
I am here. If you please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance, and Councilmember Keim is going to lead us.
Ready, set, and loop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No actions to report this evening.
Yes, we do.
Oh, we didn't.
Sorry. Council, we have items to report out of closed session.
On a motion by Councilmember Short and seconded by Councilmember Follman, the council unanimously voted to reject the claim of Norma Williams.
All right. Very good. Thank you. We'll move directly into public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city of Crescent City on any matter that's on our agenda or off, that's within our jurisdiction. Comments of public interest or matters that aren't agenda are accepted. However, the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. We can put those to staff to put on a future agenda. Any comments should be directed towards the entire council, and any comments that are not at the microphone are considered to be out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving your recognition from myself, please state your city or county residency for the record, and we're going to limit public comment to three minutes. You will also be allowed an extra three minutes to talk about something that's on our agenda later in the meeting. Do we have any general public comment tonight? Yes?
Hello. My name is Rosanna Bauer. I'm a resident of the city. I was unsure whether to bring this up during the ordinance for transferring sewer connections or under public comment. I know you are considering using the same ordinance you use for water for sewer, and I can tell you that I've struggled with that this year as a resident. And I wrote a letter back in June requesting to transfer water connections from my property on Pacific Avenue to my property on Seapom. I have three sewer connections and three water connections. It's a double lot, so there's one single-family home on each lot that could be built. So I should be able to transfer my water connection whether I build now or later. It shouldn't matter. And I have made numerous attempts to get an answer as to how to make this request. I've worked with Mr. Weir on it. I was then passed off to David Vandemark, and now I see you're considering using the same procedure for sewer, and it's not working for water. So, for instance, back in September of 2016, I was told it was going to take eight to 10 weeks to establish a policy so an action could be taken by the council. And I followed up before Christmas, and nothing had been resolved. Of course, there'd been quite a bit of problems with roadways and sewer manholes and things like that, and I understand that with my background. But I'm here to say, I'd like to know what the process is. It's almost been a year, and I still haven't even got started. And I also want to know that we don't use the same policy for sewer as water if it's not working. The county has a policy for sewers. It's very simple. You come in, you have more single-family equivalents than you need on that lot. You transfer it via the board, and you move on. And so that's my struggle.
All right. Thank you.
Hi. I'm In Cooper, the county. At the last transportation meeting, Darren Short, I thought, had a very good point. When we had a presentation made by the new Highway 199, 197 project manager, it became apparent that through your interchange that there really is no data and no study that even shows that the trucks that we have on the road fit on that road. And they used an STA A truck to go through and see where the spot turns are. But the public is crying out. I just stood on a street corner and got another whole page of signatures just for 15 minutes. We want this road fixed for the traffic we have today, not to place big, long trucks on there with a very inadequate design. That is a recipe for disaster. And so your interchange gave me a little ray of hope in that perhaps that's what we should be asking for. Don't abandon the environmental documents, but change the purpose of the project. With a minimum amount of effort, we could get a regular California legal-sized truck and test it. If it has the same problem spots as the STA A, perhaps we could just change the purpose of the project and get this road fixed for the traffic we have today. And that is really what the public is crying out for. At the next TAC meeting, which is an advisory group, they are going to be asking for who knows how much money to send us down this wormhole of legal impasse. They're asking for monies that we don't have, can't afford to spend on legal help. You know, like Caltrans really needs us to spend our money. That is so few for transportation, helping them legally. I don't think that's appropriate. I think join the public voice. Let's try to be creative and change the surrounding and get this so that most people are happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Good evening, City Council. I am Roger Getlin, and I am here as a private citizen tonight, a member and voter in the city. And I want to remind our three new members of the council. In October of this year, I asked you to consider, and you said you would, the employment of a part-time code enforcement officer in the city of Crescent City. All three of you committed to that. I know you'll be going into budget talks soon. Just want to remind you of your campaign promise and hope that you will move forward in hiring a part-time code enforcement officer to spell the very busy chief planner, Eric Taylor, and in an effort to keep our beautiful city pristine and beautiful. The other question I have, and perhaps you will at a future meeting discuss through your finance director, the state of our general fund. We are fully six officers unfilled in our 12-man department, and there are six openings, which leads me to believe that you would realize a quite substantial savings in your general fund. I would hope that you would report to the public and me as a citizen of this community the state of the general fund because of these realized, this, I think you would call it, unearned, but it's still not spent money. You've allocated it, and it's sitting in your general fund. So I would very much appreciate if you would address that at the next meeting so the public knows where you stand with your general fund. And just a moment, if you hadn't heard, that former supervisor Leslie McNamara passed away this morning, or late last night, and served for eight years in District One. And her service of the community is without question. And we're sorry that we all go that same route, and it's very sad news to deliver to you tonight.
Thank you for sharing that, Roger. All right. Any other general public comment tonight? All right. Seeing no more general public comment, we will close public comment, and we will move on into our agenda. We have two presentations tonight. The first is regarding Last Chance Grade. We welcome Jamie Mattioli tonight. Karen Sanders is here as well. Thank you for being here. So, Jamie, give us an update, please, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, and thanks for having me here tonight. So we have a presentation here. Folks can see it on your screen. And I'm here to give an update on activities related to Last Chance Grade. There's really nothing new that I haven't presented at the local Transportation Commission or if folks were attending the Huffman Stakeholder Group. There's not a lot of new information, but I wanted to be here in person to share this with you and hear any questions that you might have. Okay, so here's the overview of the presentation. I'm going to talk about what's being done out there on the grade right now to take care of the current damage that we've seen over this storm season and since the last storm season, going back to last March of 16. And I'll touch on the $5 million we are in the process of getting programmed, funded, to begin the geotechnical studies on looking at the seven alternatives that would realign the highway around Last Chance Grade. And then finally, I'm going to talk about the coordinated effort with FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, to perform an expert risk assessment, and that will inform our ultimate judgment and recommendation by FHWA on whether we do indeed fund a project to realign the road around Last Chance Grade. So this is a look at Last Chance Grade. Everybody here knows where it is and what it looks like, but it's a good reminder, starting down at the Wilson Creek Bridge and going up to post-mile 15-6 there. And just a reminder of the four major slides we have in the area. The big blue area to the south is known as the Melange, and that's where you have a slow-moving, rolling, undulating slide. And you see the effects of that on the roadway where it's, the profile's undulating up and down. And the yellow region is known as the Wilson Creek Wall Slide. We saw a slide there this year at post-mile 14-4 at the southern end of Wilson Creek Wall. We have some pictures of that. The next orange area to the north is the South Last Chance Grade Slide. And finally, you have the North Last Chance Grade Slide. So this is a look at some of the damage going back to March of 2016. In the upper right, you see that wall there, which is right between the border between the North Last Chance Slide and the South Last Chance Slide. If you look at that wall today, it's moved even further, probably a couple feet further, Karen. So that was back in last March. I don't have the current photo for it. But that's moved even further. And down below, lower left, that's the Wilson Creek Wall. And you can see where the wall sheared and dropped, at least a couple feet there, maybe two and a half feet. And below that, to the south, where these two gentlemen are standing, they're pointing towards the coast. You see that orange sign is the end-of-roadwork sign, which stayed upright as a portion of the road slid down the hill. And we lost a good, oh, Karen's going to correct me, but somewhere around 15 feet. It's close enough for Karen. And we did lose basically use of that southbound lane, and we're now actively shoring up the northbound lane. There's a photo of that, where the two gentlemen are standing there. They're standing in the southbound lane, which has been excavated. You see those micro piles. It's an eight-inch diameter steel casing down 40 feet, filled with grout and three pieces of steel. They're every two and a half feet. And where those orange dots are painted, that's where we drove the soil nails. Is that correct? So we drove those soil nails horizontally, and we have the vertical piles going down 40 feet and built a soil nail wall there to stabilize that roadway on the northbound side. And that is now complete, and we're waiting for basically the final design of that wall, and we'll begin designing that wall. We do have funding approved for this wall and for work on six other retaining walls. In April, we did get an approved damage assessment form, which initiates the projects to do repair the storm damage, both short-term repair work and some longer-term repair work. The total cost for construction of that document, taking care of storm damage back to 2016, is 27.6 million. There's a total of 35 million when you add in all the support labor costs and whatnot. So that's taking care of the current damage. And we also have, at the same time, we have an effort to program the $5 million, which is basically a jumpstart to our environmental process that would put us on the critical path to completing environmental if we have a full realignment project funded and approved. And again, at this time, we do not have a full project funded or approved. We're basically funding the very beginning of what that process would be proactively. The entire environmental process would cost, what we estimate, 50 million. So this is just a down payment on that, and we're working on this in parallel as we have our other path that would get us fully programmed to have a project going. I'll talk about that a bit later. So the scope of this effort is to perform geotech studies of the seven alternatives. One of those alternatives is to maintain the road as it is. It's a no-build alternative. We do have the alternatives all on the website if folks are interested. I do have a slide at the end of this if folks really want to see those. But there are six different ways to realign the highway around Last Chance Grade. And just as importantly, we need to perform the environmental clearance work just to study these alignments, just to do the geotech drilling. So in the next year or so, we'll be putting together a plan to drill strategically or do other sorts of studies, seismic refractions, that will tell us about the subsurface conditions out there for where we're planning to place the alignments. If there are issues, we can adjust the alignments, and we could look at whether or not some of the alignments are feasible. The timeline for this is we hope to have a good amount of this work completed by the time it's possible to have a realignment project funded and programmed, which is our next programming cycle in 2018. And finally, the pursuit of full funding. This is going on in parallel to the three other activities. We're working with our partners at FHWA, meeting regularly with them and scoping this expert risk assessment. And this risk assessment will inform the decision of whether or not to recommend a realignment project. And when that does occur, we would be taking this to the folks in Washington, D.C., FHWA, and ultimately, it's my understanding that some congressional action needs to occur to get the amount of money that we're talking about out of the emergency relief, federal emergency relief program, which typically has a nationwide cap at $100 million. The project alternatives we're looking at, the low end is 300 million, and it goes up to 1.2 billion. So there's several exemptions that we would need to use the emergency relief program. And we're working with FHWA right now to answer some very important questions, beginning with, is it feasible to maintain the alignment in its current location and have a resilient facility? So a facility that could take some damage but still remain open for critical through traffic. And we're working with the geotech experts and FHWA and with our own geotech experts to answer that first critical question. And to do that, we're putting together a synthesis report of all the geotechnical studies that have occurred to date, and we'll be sharing that with FHWA and taking a look at the geotech issues out there. So this effort has already begun, or we're putting the folks together, and we anticipate completing this by the summer of 2018. And again, that's really the next possible opportunity to fund a full realignment project. So that's all I really wanted to share today. Here's my contact info, my phone number. Again, we do have a website, lastchancegrade.com, and there's even an email for Last Chance Grade. I'm happy to take any questions. All right. Thanks for sitting through it again, sir.
Well, I was looking on the governor's website the other day, and he had signed an executive order concerning the Oroville Dam and an emergency repair. Would there be any need to consult with the governor about possible executive action that would help move this along? Would there be anything he could do to speed it up?
That's a really important question, and we work closely with our folks in state government. We are state government, and we work, this issue has attracted the attention, and the importance is not lost on the director of Caltrans, Malcolm Dockerty, who visited the site a couple times in the last year. He was here in February after we had the failure at 14-4. And we're basically doing all we can right now to get this project funded and approved. And I think that's an important question. If there was some catastrophic failure at the grade, absolutely the governor would be involved. You'd have a governor's declared emergency and that sort of activity, but we're not in that place right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Okay. So, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and tell you a little bit about what SerOptimus is doing. And I have a PowerPoint presentation, but it'll be my first time using one while I talk, so bear with me here. So I became a SerOptimus in 2009, and that was after attending a January 11th informational video about human trafficking. And then after that, I knew I needed to be a part of SerOptimus. At the time, I was working for North Coast Rape Crisis Team, and I didn't really have time to do both. So when my job ended in January in 2009, then I became a member of SerOptimus, and that's why I'm comfortable talking about human trafficking, sexual violence, violence against women and girls, because Rape Crisis taught me really well. So we are a global organization of women, and we actually do have some men who are members of SerOptimus. And we are working towards the empowerment of women and girls through education, through scholarships, and that sort of thing. Also, we honor young women in our community who volunteer. And so if you know someone who is under 18 who volunteers in her community, we would like to know that because we do honor them and give them a monetary contribution of $300. And for a young teenage girl, that's a lot of money. And so we're represented in over 130 countries. We have about 90,000 members. And I wasn't around in the '70s with SerOptimus to know this, but back then is when SerOptimus started talking about domestic violence, because at the time, nobody was. And so what we do is we get the conversation started. We get the training and the information out to the community, and then we hope the community takes over and continues with that information and education as well. So January 11th, 2007, was the first year SerOptimus took on the human trafficking issue. It was the year after it was deemed, January 11th, National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. So that following year was the year that I became involved from just that one video of a human trafficking situation. And now we do annual events so that we can raise awareness. And at the time, we had no money to educate anybody about trafficking, and so we decided that we would do a fundraising campaign, and I called it Crochet for a Cause, and I crocheted baby sweaters, and I made about $1,800 so that we could purchase advertising from the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. And those advertisements went on the back fender of the Delmore Taxi Cabs. So all the taxi cabs during that year received that information for the community. And also, the ads still rotate on Channel 4. So if you're interested in seeing those, that's where they're at, and that's where they came from. So January 11th in 2016... So January 11th in 2016, oh, I think I was supposed to be clicking this. Okay. January 11th, 2016, we had our first human trafficking awareness forum. And it was pretty well attended. We had about 70 people there. And a lot of the folks that were there were asking for more training and more information. And so here's the flyer that we had. And Chief Minsel spoke about the law around, like what the legal definition of human trafficking is. And Paula from Rape Crisis came and talked about victimization and how that affects, human trafficking affects the survivors. And Lee from Oasis Shelter Home came and she spoke about training community about human trafficking. And we talked with Elle Snow and she did a presentation and she's a survivor of sex trafficking. She's in Humboldt County and from Humboldt County. And she was befriended and then boyfriended by a gentleman who, well, a man who she thought was a gentleman. And after about three months in the relationship, he talked her into going to a concert in Concord. And so she did, they went to a concert and she never got out of it for eight months. So it took eight months for her to finally get out of that sex trafficking situation. And so Elle Snow has been training Del Norte and Humboldt County very well ever since, training law enforcement and the trainings that we've had her come and do. And so in October, she did a training to service providers. And a lot of those folks were actually at the forum, the ones who were asking for more training, like the open door clinic and law enforcement and the district attorney's office. We had representation from a lot of different agencies, home health workers, mental health workers, social service workers. So we had a range of folks that were interested in that information. We provided a one-day training for them and it was very well received. And so just a week before that training, we did a community viewing of a movie called Sold. And it's a movie about a 13-year-old girl who was stolen from her home in Nepal and taken to India where she was sex trafficked in a brothel. And so it's a really hard movie to watch, but about 60 of us came together from the community and we watched that movie and we, like, I think we processed, the reality is that it's everywhere and Seroptimus can't end human trafficking. All we can do is educate people. We're not the purchasers. We're not buying women and children for sex. So all we can do is help educate people so that when they see it, they know what it looks like. If you don't know what it looks like, you can't report it and law enforcement can't investigate it. And they weren't really trained on what it looked like either. So law enforcement wasn't picking up on signs that could be sex trafficking because they weren't taught about it. Now they're being taught about it, so that's going to be really helpful. So currently, well, because we know that education is really important, we decided the first place to go and do the education was to the hotels and motels. Because there's a, if you see my PowerPoint slide, 27 million men, women and children are enslaved in trafficking currently. And we know that if people are asking for training that are medical providers, in case they come across someone, isn't it more realistic that we need to train hotel and motel employees and managers? So that's our goal now, to do this training for hotels and motels. And we took this, here's another little statistic for you. It's a $32 billion annual income for organized crime, sex trafficking. So anyway, we went to the chamber and we did a presentation to their board and received this really nice letter from them encouraging hotels and motels managers to schedule a training with us. And that's really what I'm here tonight is to ask you, in the end, I'm going to say, and what I want from you is a letter. So we took a few months before we could get this meeting, before it could get all fixed. So by the time we got the letter and we were ready to do trainings, it was summertime and we couldn't jump into a training in the middle of summer while people are trying to work their jobs. So our goal is to, in the next couple of weeks, be scheduling these trainings and I'll be the one doing them. And hopefully, we'll be able to get the majority of them done before season starts too heavy and people get too busy to allow them. Oh, I see. I didn't even, see, I told you guys I wasn't going to be too good at that. This is my daughter Danielle. She lives in North Carolina and she purchased eight of the Sold books for us to use to give away for fundraisers or whatever. And she's like, Mom, I really want to help, but I'm too far away. And so she joined this, it's online, Real Men Don't Buy Girls. And she made her little sign, she got up there and she took her picture. So she's campaigning for us too, all the way in North Carolina. I appreciate her for that. So we did a human trafficking awareness art exhibit at Pacific Northwest Physical Therapy. It was the perfect location. We were very well attended, as you can see. And with these doors were so fabulous, they're just doors screwed together, great accordion, but they worked really well for our portraits. And this portrait is a mixed painting with oils and all kinds of different things that she made, aluminum foil. And that piece of aluminum foil has a poem written in Nepali, so you almost have to see it to get it. But the young lady who created this is Alyssa Wilson and her great-grandmother is Mary Peacock. And she works for the project that we partnered with to bring the artwork to Del Norte County. And this piece of artwork, the person, the artists that paint these portraits use their own interpretation. So this was that artist's interpretation. And the canvas that she used to create the project is bed sheets. And the reason she used bed sheets, and you probably can't see well from far away, but it's torn and sewn and torn and sewn. And the reason she used bed sheets was to bring more of an awareness to us that this woman was rescued from a brothel where she was tortured and the sheets just brought it out. You know, it was really amazing. So this is the project that we're planning to use to train our hotels and motels. And I gave all of you lists, I mean, a copy of each of the pieces that I have here. And it's a really great program because it's only a half hour total. And we figured a half hour was about as long as any hotel or motel manager is going to allow his employees to be trained. And so I'll go to each of their locations individually and train as many people as I can. And there, on the very front of your packet, you'll see that there's a little outline. This is how simple it would be for hotel and motel managers to do this training themselves. It's very simple. And it's a 10-minute video and it's 20 minutes of going over the written information because I, as I worked for a year with Del Norte Reads and realized the epidemic of people who can't read, adults who can't read and young people who can't read at their grade level. And so my intention is to go over every word of this with the folks so that they get everything that needs to be understood. And then we have secured the money by doing fundraisers to print all of these informational pages out for the staff and for the managers. And we'll create a certificate for each of them. And we're hoping that that's enough incentive for them to want to take the class or have their staff take the class. But again, my main goal to come here is not just to educate, but to ask you for a letter and support, to encourage folks to schedule us for the trainings. And so, yeah. And that's National Center for Human Trafficking Resource Center phone number. And that's also on all of the ink pens I handed out. And the next set of ink pens we make will actually say, "Text be free" instead of a phone number, or maybe as well as, because sometimes it's not safe to text, talk when you could just text for support. So anyway, that's it and thank you very much.
Everybody, thank you.
Hey, Benita. When we were speaking at the luncheon, you talked about gathering statistics in our area.
I talked about trying to gather statistics.
Trying. The point you made was that we, you know, some, a lot of people probably think, well, that doesn't happen here.
Correct.
We don't know if it does or not.
No, we don't know it does.
Correct. Could you just expand on that, what you were talking about?
One of the ladies that came to our training in October, her grand, she works at social services, her granddaughter was actually taken to Reading and they were able to get her back before she was raped, which is amazing. So she's back in the community. But we definitely know trafficking is happening here and I'll tell you why. The Highway 101, everybody says five is the corridor for drugs and trafficking, but the reality is all roads, all roads, on how they're getting where they're going. So if you're taking someone from San Francisco and you're going to, there's a circuit, it's called a circuit. So there's a place that traffickers take the women and children and they circle back and they just do this circle, it's a circuit. So when they leave from San Francisco, it's reasonable when they're headed to Portland that they're going to go up 101. And when you've left San Francisco, we're about an eight-hour drive-ish away and they're about an eight-hour drive-ish away. So it's reasonable that Eureka, Crescent City, Brookings are going to be the place that they're going to be stopping overnight. And with the internet the way it is now, they have all their johns lined up before they even get to town. So they just get to town, they already know who's coming and when they're coming and they, you know, traffic and make their money. And then they hit the road the next day or the two days later and they're headed back up north and to go where the circuit's taking them. So we know it's happening here. I know that I could not get any statistics of a case from the district attorney, from a case from the sheriff's department or from the police department at the time before we did our training and stuff. There were no cases. I did talk to a victim witness and she said, a few years ago, a young girl who was monk was married off, sold to, however that, you know, is interpreted by law, to a man in Sacramento. And that young girl ran away and came back to Del Norte County and got into our foster care system and grew up here. But that was the only thing that even victim witness could wreck their brains to come up with for statistics. So we don't have any yet, but once everybody's trained, we're expecting that that will happen. So I did go to the sheriff's office and do a training during their shift change, just letting them know, heads up, we're going to be doing this training and you may start getting calls that are trafficking related rather than domestic violence or sexual assault. Just strictly, you know, that's what they're being investigated as, because the victim is not stupid enough to say that this is not my husband or boyfriend. She's going to go along with everything he says and that's what it's going to look like as a domestic violence case. So, yeah. So I apologize for not asking if you had questions. Does anyone else have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Benita. And, you know, my take on this from an education standpoint, if, if through education, we save one person, then it's all been worthwhile. I mean, that's all there is to it, if that's what we do. And so, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sure. Susan, come on.
Susan Doherty, and I'm a member of Seroptimus and on the human trafficking committee. And in answer to your question, I wanted to talk about just a couple of things because it was also new to me in this past year or so. And a couple of things that have come up is, one of the agencies that was at our very first training went back through their old files and had mentioned that, they came up with 10 cases that they thought they had maybe mislabeled as domestic violence, that were actually human trafficking. So that was one thing. Then at the training that we had, that Elle from Humboldt County gave the training that day at Elk Valley Rancheria, she had talked about the internet setup for human trafficking and that there are these certain websites that people go to and that the women advertise on. And so prior to that training, she had set up on these pages, things for Crescent City area. And she got a number of hits from Crescent City. That means that people knew to go to that page. And so the other thing is that, something that kind of resonated with me is that, I think it was two years ago in Reading, the Record Searchlight ran a story about human trafficking there. And one of the questions that was asked to the john, or not the john, but the actual, I don't even know the trafficker, yes, that set things up was, why here? Why seems so odd? And he said, because you weren't looking for us. And so I just wanted to share that with you because it really fit me. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. All right. Thank you. And we will, we will be putting that probably on our next agenda with a sample letter and hopefully we will take action on that in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We move on to our consent calendar. We have a number of items on consent calendar, regular council meeting minutes from April 17th, warrant claims list, April 8th through April 21st, payroll report, April 15th through April 21st, budget actual for March 2017, April 2017, quarterly cash and investments report as of March 31st, budget amendment for city manager department and the attached resolution 2017-12, approval of purchase orders over $3,000, Crescent City wastewater treatment plan, mechanical building MCC isolation project change order, and the healthcare resolution. I will pull item number 11. Dr. Duncan is here and we're going to have some discussion about that. And also, I don't think we need to pull it, but there is one correction to our minutes. Under council directives, two weeks ago, item C, I had a hard time coming up with who the fourth member, sixth member, I guess it was, of the ad hoc committee, it's actually Dwayne Reichlin. So if you could just take note of that and correct our minutes to identify him as the member from the healthcare district board that I couldn't remember. Is there anything, anything else from the consent calendar that the council would like to pull or consider? Any public comment on our consent calendar with the exception of item number 11? All right. Then I would take a motion that we approve the consent calendar minus item number 11.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
To include the correction in the minutes.
What's that? To include the correction, the one correction in the minutes. Yes, thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Fallman.
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno.
Yes.
Councilmember Keim.
Yes.
Pro Tim Short.
Yes.
Mayor Inscore.
Yes, very good. Item number 11 is a joint resolution of the Board of Supervisors, County of Del Norte and City Council of the City of Crescent City, supporting affordable, high-quality healthcare in the region. We had a first glance at this two weeks ago and we brought it back for ratification. The Board of Supervisors did approve it unanimously on April 25th. And so we're back to look at this and hopefully ratify it tonight. But I've asked Dr. Duncan if he would be here and I invite him to come and share with us before we take any further action.
Thank you. My name's Greg Duncan. I'm the chief of surgery at the hospital and a member of the Del Norte Healthcare District Board. And the idea for the resolution actually was presented to me by Mayor Inscore, who I really appreciate. And it was based on the success that the last resolution two years ago passed through, 10-0. All of the city council and supervisor members voted in favor of it. And that was designed to stop critical access. So one of the big initial decisions that I disagreed with when I was on the hospital board was critical access. That was downsizing the hospital 50%. It would have raised our number of mandatory transfers and also tripled the charges on our Medicare patients. So we were able to ultimately have the hospital board rescind that application to the great service of the community. Now we're focused on affordability and accountability. And the accountability is in the form of our local governing board. We're trying to initiate better communication with them. They meet in closed session, as you know. But I think as a community, if we could get our local board members and the healthcare district and members of this board in the same room, we could solve a lot of the other issues. And that brings me to the third item, which is the affordability. And I don't know that there's anyone who's dealt with the healthcare system and has not come away with surprise or shock even at the fees that are assessed. And we did a study on the healthcare district of Sutter Coast charges with some of the other options, both locally and in the region. And Sutter was charging up to 10 times the amount for the same service. So that impacts our city workers, our county workers, your insurance premiums, out-of-pocket and deduct. Out-of-pocket and deductibles have gone significantly higher over the last few years. So part of the resolution aims at affordability in the sense of posting charges and eliminating out-of-network providers in the emergency room. And this is really important. There are a lot of people that have separate deductibles for out-of-network versus in-network and those deductibles can be $20,000 for a family, $10,000 for an individual. And the doctors in the ER right now are routinely charging $2,000 for visits that are described as 10 minutes. We want to see that end. And, and the patients aren't even aware until they get the bill. So, so think of this whole five-year struggle with local healthcare in three categories. Accessibility, thanks to the 5,000 people in the community that signed the petition, thanks to the support from the city council, the resolution I referenced, we have, at least for now, stopped the critical access downsizing. Accountability, we're trying to open this dialogue, get the board meeting minutes, get the financial records so we can really all be on the same page. And then finally affordability, in the form of no more out-of-network surprise medical bills and charges in line with market rates. I understand the hospital may have to charge more for, for some reasons, but 10 times more and thousands of dollars more than neighboring hospitals. I don't see that. And I think if we could see the numbers, perhaps they would convince us otherwise. But right now, we're just dealing with an organization that operates in secret, doesn't release anything to the public despite these requests. So we're hoping that this resolution before you will have the same positive impact that the last one did. And I'm certainly happy to entertain questions and it's a complex issue, but those are, those are the basic categories that we're trying to address on behalf of the community.
Okay. Do we have any specific questions for Dr. Duncan?
Other than passing this resolution tonight, is there any other type of community outreach that you could have us do, get that message out there?
That's a great question. What we're hoping to do through the two-by-two is to begin some formal meetings with the hospital board, so you would have two of your members represented. I don't know if it'd be the same two, but also I think reaching out to your local board members, you may not know all of them, but the majority of the board are local and, and I understand how convincing the Sutter Health executives can be. They fly up here and they give incredible presentations that are very convincing. I think if those local board members could hear the other side a little bit, that that would be very helpful. They're the governing body and we're the only locally owned and locally governed Sutter affiliate in the state of California because of the community support. So great question, if you know any of the local board members, please reach out to them. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? I just have a question, as kind of as a follow-up from the discussion from the Board Supervisors meeting, because I was not aware of that M Care, which is sort of at this affordability quotient, also provides, is a contract service with, with Curry General Hospital in Brookings. And having gone to the ER in, in Gold Beach, I didn't receive a $2,000 bill in Gold Beach, so I'm just wondering, and I realize we're talking about Oregon versus California, but can you give any kind of idea of why there is, is such a discrepancy with the same company provider in these two hospital systems?
It's a great question, and I've thought about it a lot since that meeting. And there is no answer other than their ability to charge more here. There, there's no reason that seeing an emergency room doctor in Gold Beach would be much less expensive than providing the same doctor here. Many of them are the same doctors. There's no reason for it. And, and this is the heart of this newly released book by Elizabeth Rosenthal called American Sickness, where she goes through the massive discrepancies in healthcare fees that make no sense at all. And, and that was a wonderful point that was brought up and people are told, "Well, it's the state line." So what? That's a bug station, right? It's the same road, it's the same region, why are the costs across that state line so, so much higher? Well, they're not higher. The charges are higher and the costs are the same. The charges are higher.
Thank you. We have got to stay on top of this and, and I appreciate, Dr. Duncan, your willingness to approach this from, from a positive vantage point that says, "Hey, we want to be good partners in providing quality healthcare, affordable, so let's work together." And I think that the resolution does that. You've done a fantastic job and appreciate all the, the hours, blood, sweat and tears that you have put into this, this last five years, and you're to be commended for that and we certainly appreciate it. I know I do.
Thank you.
And the financial investment you personally have made in all of this.
Yeah, it's, it has been quite a journey and I never would have volunteered for it, but because I was in the boardroom and I could see what was going on. See, all the other board members are appointed by Sutter Health, they sign a confidentiality agreement with Sutter Health, and the bylaws have a loyalty oath for Sutter Health. I didn't take that loyalty oath. I'm here for the community, not for Sutter Health. So there's a big difference in how the board is structured between the chief of staff seat, which I had, and then the other seats which were appointed.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think the value of this resolution is, is significant enough, even though we have had a look at it ourselves and obviously it was presented to the Board of Supervisors and read there, but for the benefit of our community and for a public who may be watching our meeting either now live or watch it afterwards, I would like to read the resolutions before we take action on it. Whereas the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors and the City Council of Crescent City support affordable, high-quality healthcare, whereas Sutter Coast Hospital is operating the county's only hospital, whereas transparency from Sutter Coast Hospital is essential to meeting the goal of affordable, high-quality healthcare, whereas the Sutter Coast Hospital's board meetings are closed to the public, whereas the Sutter Coast Hospital has declined to honor official record requests from the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors and the City Council of Crescent City, whereas the charges for care at Sutter Health facilities, including Sutter Coast Hospital, exceed the charges for care at non-Sutter Health affiliated facilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors and City Council of the City of Crescent City recommend the following actions be taken by the board of directors of Sutter Coast Hospital. One, Sutter Coast Hospital approves its meeting minutes and financial records since 2001, 2011, I'm sorry, for public review. Two, Sutter Coast Hospital prominently display its charges for common services and procedures, including laboratory tests, imaging studies and fees from physicians either contracted with or directly employed by Sutter Coast Hospital. Three, the local members of the Sutter Coast Hospital Board of Directors hold regular public meetings to allow for public input regarding hospital operations. And four, Sutter Coast Hospital no longer engage in professional service contracts with individuals or entities, including M Care Holdings, Inc., which operate out-of-network for local insurance plans. All right, I would, if there's any public comment, I would take that now regarding this healthcare resolution. Seeing that, we'll close public comment then and we will bring it back to the council for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve this joint resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the City Council of Crescent City, supporting affordable, high-quality healthcare in the region.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Inscore?
Yes, very good. Thank you. Dr. Duncan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look forward to continuing our discussion with the, the healthcare district board and continuing to work together to, to press this item forward. All right, let's return to our agenda and we will notice that we have, let me get back here, a public hearing, we have one public hearing. We had a public comment directed towards this. This is ordinance 798 regarding the transferability of sewer connection permits.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is the adoption of ordinance 798 regarding the sewer connection permits. Up until this date, the city has not had an official policy regarding this subject. So when staff looked at implementing a policy, we looked towards what we had in place for water permits. And basically, the permits are not transferable without the express consent of the city council. And so that is what we propose in this ordinance that the council adopt, so that the policies are the same.
Okay. Do we, going back to the question that Ms. Bauer raised, do we have a clear process for a resident to ask for that transferability? Because it says, the, the assumption would be that, that if it can't be granted without express written consent of the city council or its designee, that there must be a process for them to get that consent. Do we, is that, is that process delineated out someplace for?
No, I don't think there's any process delineated anywhere. That's something that I think staff would need to bring to the council for approval, specifically, the last time we, we've done it one time and it was by way of a great, written agreement.
Okay. I, I don't have a personal conflict with bringing our two sewer and water into, to agreement with one another, but I do think that we do need to ask staff to come back to us with a clear policy of how could somebody appeal that if in fact there were, there is a situation that it would be appropriate for them to be able to ask for that kind of waiver. The, the very statement here that we're saying implies that there could be a situation where somebody could ask for that, that we might grant, so we should figure out how to do that. Not sure why we did never figure out how to do that, but...
Yeah, and one suggestion for something like that is if the, you know, there's a lot of people could ask for any, any reason they want to transfer, there's the wide variety of situations. So the council may want to consider placing some sort of limitation on that, on the types of requests that they would like to consider bringing before them instead of every request under the sun.
Sure.
So you could develop some sort of policy like that and adopt it by resolution, which said, you know, if it, if it has one of these, you know, issues, we would consider granting the request and, you know, you can bring those to the council.
Okay.
But if it's simply, you know, you have one connection here, but you decided to build on a different lot first, you know, then that's maybe something you wouldn't consider. But if you have too many connections than you could ever use, maybe that's something you would want to consider being transferable, those different types of preliminary decisions.
Thank you. We'll revisit this then at the end of our meeting at council directives and, and possibly ask staff to address that. But let's go ahead and bring it back to the, to the actual action in front of us tonight. Any, council have any questions regarding the recommendation for ordinance 798? I don't see any. Webby, public comment regarding ordinance 798 and ordinance of the City of Crescent City amending chapter 13.24.050 of the sewer charges and regulations of chapter 13.24, sewer service regulations of chapter 13, public services of the Crescent City Municipal Code regarding transferability of connection permits. Any, any public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment then. Bring it back to the council.
Just, pardon me for, for that, Mr. Mayor, but just along with what council was saying about whether the city council would want to see all requests or not, my thought was, can't we make this easier for the general public? And, and maybe this question would be better answered at the, the next step in this, that you were just talking about, is bringing back a staff report about how, what the process is going to be here, but it just kind of sat with me funny that we have to give written consent for every time somebody wants to transfer a water connection that they're not using? Seems, seems kind of cumbersome to the public and, and I guess to the city council also.
The, the way this, this ordinance is written, it, it would allow you to say in this policy resolution, designate somebody, say your city manager, you know, once we get one, that could approve these certain types of transfers, if that's your choice, so it didn't have to come before the city council, or you could require that all requests come before the city council.
I see that does say designate, I guess, I was just kind of wondering why it's, why it's got to be so difficult, I guess. If, in your, your analogy there, just somebody had, you know, "I was going to build here, but I decided to build over there first." Is, is it that complicated for the city to just say, "Okay, we're going to move you from here to there"? Is it? I, I don't know the answer to that, so...
I don't think it's, it would need to be complicated, it's just something that should be signed off on because it's, it involves quite a bit of money and sometimes when you have, that's when, if there's not a good paper trail and sometimes things happen and then you find out later, like, "Well, why was that transferred? That wasn't actually per our policy." But it wouldn't necessarily have to be anything complicated, you know, sewer permit, transfer approval, you know, half a sheet of paper with a signature and date and, you know, that kind of stuff.
I see Mr. Weir sending a subliminal message by standing up in the aisle. So I sense that he wants to set me straight on this one. Thank you, Councilmember Short, mayor members of the council. Yes, that was my non-verbal communication. Yes, thank you, I appreciate those. So this, it is an interesting topic, to, to, to say the least. And it's not as simple as what you might think. So I actually, I, when this subject first came up, I actually put a, proposed a question to the Public Works Director's listserv and received several comments immediately back stating, you know, "Be very careful with, with something like this. A lot of jurisdictions don't allow the transfer at all. It's just once you have the right, it stays with the parcel." There's some jurisdictions, such as Redding, that I can speak of just off the cuff, that have just very limited exceptions. And so if the council direction is for us to come back with, with a policy, we would be looking at some of those limited exceptions because it, it is very cumbersome when you have, you know, 4,200 accounts and connections, in theory, to, to track those over time, especially if one transfers, say today, and then you have another one transferring five years from now and just to, to keep track of exactly where they're all at. So that's where a lot of jurisdictions just don't allow the transfer and once it's with the parcel, it stays with the parcel for the life. But so if we were directed to come back, we would take, you know, some of those other considerations, what other jurisdictions are doing, and give the council all the different options.
How, how often do these transfer requests come in? Do we get a lot of these?
You know, the...
I, I just don't understand how it would be confusing if there's a paper trail.
Yeah, the, the city really doesn't get a lot at this point, but I think the county has in the past because they have had, they have had their ordinance in place where they do allow it. There has been, you know, just a few instances in, in my time here where we have tried to track them. What we do get a lot of requests for are just how many connections are associated with a, with a particular parcel. So we have to go back and try to track what exactly that parcel paid and, and then try to evaluate how many sewer connections were associated or water connections were associated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Eric.
Very good, thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to the council then. We have a recommended action and that is that we waive full reading and read by title only. Ordinance 798, which we have already read, so I'm looking for action on behalf of the council.
Move to adopt ordinance 798 and ordinance of the City of Crescent City amending chapter 13.24.050 sewer charges and regulations of chapter 13.24, sewer service regulations of chapter 13, public services of the Crescent City Municipal Code regarding the transferability of sewer connection permits.
We have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote? Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Kine?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes. I will go ahead, just so that I don't forget, and Mr. Weir, if you could just take the lead on this and work with, with council on it, I would like to have staff come back to us with a clear process for a person who might want to petition for the portability of their connection, whether that be sewer or water. Make sure that we do it, so it's exactly the same for both of those. We don't want to have one that says, if it's water, you do this, if it's sewer, you do something different. That was the whole part of this little exercise here. So if you would please work on that and bring that back to us sometime in the future, we would very much appreciate it. Continuing business, recruitment for city manager. Our wonderful human resources administrator is here to share with us tonight, so, Sunny?
Good evening, council, how are you?
We're doing great, how are you?
I'm good. Okay, so I've prepared a few things for you in here. So I have attached the job description for the city manager's classification, and I have also attached the job flyer that I would like to, for you guys to look over, review, and approve for the position actually going out. So the job description, the classification, that could be free to review if you guys would like to make any changes to that, and then that way we can do that if you'd like, anything you'd like to take away or add. I did the basic things that are required or expectant of a city manager's position in the job announcement here. As you guys can see, it's pretty detailed. I have a lot of things in there. Tried to make it eye-pleasing, because like I had told you last meeting, we are a competition with other cities looking for city managers. Highlight the pay and the duties and the knowledge of the aspect of the city manager's position. Also the qualifications on here and the ideal candidate. So I kindy, kind of, excuse me, took liberty of kind of hearing maybe what you guys were looking for and trying to convey in words. I have put them here on the back, if we're your ideal candidate, you guys may want to review that. If there's any changes, please let me know what you'd like me to make. I'd like to try to get this recruitment done. The interim closes this Thursday. I would like to try to get this out as soon as the interim closes, is not to confuse people between interim and actual city manager's position. We anticipate to run this probably for a couple of months, is from what I was kind of gathering, and I've also attached supplemental questions where, which were not included on the last recruitment for a city manager's position. So I took the liberty of creating some questions for applicants to, to answer. That will kind of give you a little bit about their, where they feel their direction is and a little bit about where they are as a person and a candidate, for you guys to try to make the process as easy as possible.
Any, any questions for Sunny or comments?
Is it too late to add any other supplemental questions?
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, I like the questions that we have there, but I want one that directly asks just point blank, what is your overall management philosophy or management style?
Okay.
I mean, a lot of these, they beat around that quite a bit, and there's a lot of things that we could, you know, connect the dots on from answers to questions, but just one that's very succinct, what is your management style, or describe your management style?
Okay.
I have a question about, question number five on that same page, where did that come from?
Sustainability.
Yeah, the sustainability question.
Be able to sustain a healthy budget, sustain a healthy work environment, sustainability is used a lot in like local government, so it's, this is subject to you guys to remove or take anything, these are just ideas.
Okay.
We can always remove it.
I'd like to remove that one.
Okay.
I can, I can live with or without it. If we, if we use it, we need to change the type of, where it says sustainable is, not in.
That's why I have second eyes on it all, it's...
Yeah, I know, I hear, I know how that is. Do we have consensus on, do we like sustainability, or do we have care, concern?
I think that's a big, you know, having a candidate that understands the financial part of the position is going to be very important.
I would agree with that change.
As well as someone who understands going into negotiations, budgeting, that's all, those are all going to be very important things for you to look at.
I, I think that if we rework number five to simply identify something that identifies the importance of fiscal responsibility and what their, what their concept of that is in relationship to city government would be, would be fine.
Okay.
On philosophy of leadership style, management style, management, management style probably, both is. The other, a couple of things just on the flyer, and I don't know if some of this was just scanning or just not, I just noticed that there were a couple places where lines were returned already, but they weren't, like the line didn't finish, it's on the next page down, so like, under desirable education, it says administration or business, then there's a big gap, and then administration. Just some of those things that I noticed.
I had to do a few moving things around.
Okay.
So this is by no means a actual formal...
Tighten that up, same, same thing with the entry, introductory paragraph of City of Crescent City, after Public Works, there's a, there's a gap there. The other, the other thing that I picked up on that I know is probably a typical verbiage used from an HR standpoint, I just don't like it, and that is under the City of Crescent City Classification, city manager, under the job description, under supervision, when it talks about who he supervises. I do not like the expression skilled and unskilled personnel.
Okay.
I think all of our personnel are skilled, they're skilled differently.
Right.
I, I would prefer to say professional, technical, clerical, and general employees or something. I don't, I don't like the message that says that we have unskilled people.
Okay.
Maybe that's silly on my part, it just, it just jumped off the page at me is not, not touting the wonderful people that we have.
So I think there's, in the job description itself, there's a lot of room for improvement. This is what was already established.
Yeah.
So this would be a good opportunity for you guys to review that. Like I said, the job description's pretty common standard with a lot of, with the position, but you can really tailor this to make it your own.
Yeah.
And so we, we can change that.
But I'm, I'm fine with the job description that we have. I'm, I'm more concerned about getting this thing flown as, as quickly as possible than to go through and try to correct all those things. I just, I guess I'm a proponent of our wonderful staff, and I don't want anybody to be communicated as unskilled. Does there anybody else have anything for Sunny regarding this? I appreciate very much, it's great, great work of getting this ready to go.
Absolutely.
I really like your ideal candidate, you did a great job on that.
Thank you. And we can do this, I was going to do this in a folder, like style, and it's sent out, so, but it's just time to get those printed, it won't take very long.
Okay.
Excellent.
Anything else? Are you, got any? Okay. Great.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, we'll bring it back. If we don't have anything else, if we have any public comment regarding the, the search for our recruitment for city manager? Just one, I guess another question, we, I know we talked about it, but from a council standpoint, because of the, the fact that the interim position is closing on May 4th, are we going to suggest a, the potential of a closed session meeting to review those applications on next Monday?
Yes.
Prior to the budget workshop?
Yes.
So that will be at 5:00?
Yes, so there will be screen Friday, so that, the process closes 5:00 on Thursday, we'll screen them Friday. You have received quite a considerable amount of applicants for that position. So the screen process will, will, you know, take the day, some of them are pretty lengthy packets that have been submitted.
Okay.
And those will be ready for you, the people that pass the screening process for Monday review before close, or before the workshop.
Okay, great, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Did I ask for a public comment? I did? All right, I didn't get any, so I guess we'll move on then. I guess I would look for a motion to approve the job, job announcement and supplemental questions for the recruitment with the suggestions and additions that were made by the council.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And before we vote on this, are you still comfortable that, that we're talking about the same budgetary costs that we, that were contained in our consent agenda tonight? I'm sorry, make it get back up again. We approved with a budget amendment in, in consent, estimating a cost of around $4,000 for this?
It should be about the same.
Still okay.
Right, yeah, I found some actually inexpensive recruiting options with the help of Fritz, and we found a good one that would, I think, get a lot for really inexpensive amounts, so it might even be less than that.
Awesome, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second, would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Kine?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. We will move on then, we are... Cooper!
Cooper.
Mr. Weir, we missed you two weeks ago, but we were thrilled to death that you were with your family on vacation. We trusted you had a good time, we, we made it through a meeting without you, giving us our every-two-week Cooper update, and I know we're going to have a more exciting Cooper update tonight than we have had in weeks.
Yes, yes, hopefully, hopefully the weather continues to cooperate, which is, which is what it is. With this winter, I'm not doing any, anything, but hopefully at this point.
Go ahead and put the skilled and unskilled thing back in.
That was quick, though, I'll give you that, that was, that was fast.
Unskilled directors?
Oh, that's, that's good. All right, so back to Cooper, back to the, the topic at hand. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so the weather obviously was, was not cooperating when I was off on vacation. It was beautiful in Arizona, but unfortunately, I received several phone calls from our, our dedicated skilled staff. And throughout the night on Wednesday, when the treatment plant flows went again over 6 million, and we had several inches of rain and streets were flooding, that was, that was last week, that was either Monday or Tuesday, I guess, of last week. This week, the weather cleared, beautiful today, looks to be beautiful for the next couple of days. They, the county did all the road prep today, they're going to finalize that tomorrow, and we look to pave on Wednesday.
All right.
So as long as the asphalt plan is running, when they have to run the proper mix, we will pave by, before the week is out.
Good deal, that's awesome.
So yes, and then, this will hopefully be the last Cooper update in which you will need to extend the emergency. The next one will just be the finalization of the project and the final report out of expenditures.
Yeah, that's fantastic. All right, anybody have any questions for Mr. Weir?
How long does the concrete need to dry?
Actually, with asphalt, you, you really just, you need to, you need to place it, and it's, it comes in at a pretty hot temperature, somewhere around 170, 180 degrees, somewhere in there. And then once it gets placed and it gets compacted with the rollers, it just needs to cool off, and then we'll be able to allow traffic on it. So it's, it's really, the next day, we'll allow traffic on it, so it's not very long.
Are we still looking to come in under budget?
We are.
Excellent.
Yes.
Sounds great.
Good deal. All right, we have a public comment on Cooper Avenue. Seeing them, we'll close public comment, bring it back to council, as a reminder, we need a four-fifths majority to continue this emergency action, and I would ask for a motion to do so.
I move we continue the emergency declaration for Cooper Avenue.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Kine?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. Mr. Weir didn't even have to sit down, we were going to go on to our next item, which is regarding the Head Start Building renovation project, so go ahead and talk to us about this if you would, please.
All right, thank you, Mayor Enscore, members of the council. So the Head Start Building project is one of those projects that have been before the council multiple times. We have bid this project twice. We, we, as reported out to the council last time, only received one bid. Again, it was substantially over the budget that we had, so the council took several different actions. One was allocating more of the CDBG funds to the project at the, at the last meeting. And then what's on tap for this meeting is to hopefully move ahead with the project. So as part of that, we'll ask the council to, one, approve the final plans and specifications for the project, and then we'll ask you to approve an agreement with Pearson Construction in the amount of $206,740. Now that includes the base bid and alternative one of the, of the bids, which is to replace the roof. And then the third action will be to approve the deductive change order number one in the contract, which would reduce the contract amount from 206,740 to 146, 236, which is slightly different than the agenda, I just noticed as we came up. But that's because the change order isn't for $60,000 even, it's for 60,000, I think it's 504, something like that, in effect. So with that being said, what, what this will do is it'll authorize a contract for Pearson to do the base bid, which is the rehab to the front entryways and the bathrooms of the buildings, including the hallway and replacing any of that, that flooring in there. And also we'll allocate them the funds to complete the roof replacement of the project. The change order, as we spoke in the past about, we've actually looked at their schedule values when they submitted their, their base bid, and we saw that the painting portion, as well as some minor electric work, and the fence portion of the work was well above our estimates. Feel we can do that work more cost-effectively with, with our force account labor, so that's where we reduce that out of their scope of work, and we're going to continue and complete that with our own forces. That, that basically, in a nutshell, is the project's scope of work. Timing is critical, as this is a Head Start school facility, so it really needs to be completed during the summer months. This was also a project that we've worked on for a long time, so we're getting to the end of the funding as far as CDBG goes, I believe that needs to be expended. I believe it's before October of this year, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. So timing's critical at this point. So it's all came together, last couple council meetings, we have the funding, now we have worked out a deal with the contractor to be able to complete this contract. If it's authorized tonight, we'll award that to Pearson, issue them a letter of award tomorrow. With that, we anticipate notice of proceed being at the end of May, and then they'll need to complete the construction by the end of July.
Very good. All right, do we have any, any questions for Mr. Weir?
It's been well gone over, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on the remodeling of the Head Start building? All right, we'll close public comment, then we'll bring it back to the council. We do have three separate items that we need to approve, so...
Do one at a time?
We need to do them one at a time, please.
I move we approve the final plans and specifications for the Head Start renovation project.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Kine?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes. Second is regarding the actual bid in alternative one, could I get somebody to make that motion?
I move we approve an agreement with Pearson Construction to complete the Head Start renovation project base bid and alternative one, roof replacement, in the amount of $206,740.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
Have a motion and a second, would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Kine?
Yes.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. We have one other recommendation, if somebody would like to make that motion.
I move to approve the deductive change order number one, reducing the contract amount from 206,740 to 146,740.
Two, oh, that's right, 740 was the, the different number because of the...
Is this the wrong?
No, no, he, I believe you said the correct number on the agenda. It says 146,236, which is not the correct number. So I will second your motion.
Very good.
Did we get that right?
Yeah, so the, the final contract, 146,236... Yeah, so the final contract, 146,236, is the correct number.
Oh, 236.
I'm glad you said it straight.
I amend my motion to reflect that.
Yes.
Alright, very good. We have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes. Alright, very good. Mr. Weir, you're on a roll. Talk to us about a development of a project initiation documents for Pebble Beach Drive pedestrian improvement.
Yes, so this is a project that was included in the overall work program within the Delnor County Local Transportation Commission's budget for this year. And it's really a, it's a critical project or a needed project. It was listed as a priority project in the 2016 transportation plan, and what it is, is it's a project that tries to fully scope and identify all the pedestrian needs along Pebble Beach Drive between Sixth Street and Preston Island. So you see on your screens, we've hatched out the area that they will evaluate. So they call these PIDs, they're Project Initiation Documents. They used to be referred to as a project study report, but it's really the first step in fully identifying all of the components in a project, including traffic counts, including any environmental concerns that might be with that particular project, looking at the different alternatives to try to address the objectives within a project. And it really creates a nice document when you're trying to go out for grant funding. So in particular, a pedestrian improvement project like this would really be well-suited for ATP funds, the Active Transportation Program funds. And so what this document will do will give us all the information to write a really competitive grant for that particular source. It will also give us information if another source comes available, such as some of the other transportation bills that are currently going through. So this is the groundwork to complete that. Staff put out an RFP requesting consultants give us proposals to complete this project. Unfortunately, we did not receive any proposals. The timing was getting a little tight towards the end of the year, I guess, and so the consultants, for one reason or another, didn't submit their proposals. So we spoke with Green Dot Transportation Solutions. They said they looked at the project. Unfortunately, their workload didn't allow them to submit a proposal at the time either. However, they're very interested in the project. They can do it within budget, which is $32,000 that the transportation has allocated to the city for this project, and they can complete it within the schedule, which is by June 30th of this year, at least for the vast majority of the work. So this project will have a draft document to city staff by June 30th, and will be finalized by the, I think it's by the end of August. So without any questions, Jim?
I also have a question. This deals with the Brother Jonathan lookout. We were having some issues with some erosion at that site. Is this going to address any of that problem?
It will take into consideration, so it's actually really good timing for the project because we have that geotech that's currently on contract, and they're looking at that, so they'll be in coordination with A-S-I-Chen, who's completing the geotechnical work on that. We plan on coming back to the council the next meeting with their report. We've also looked at this particular section, especially right along Eighth Street as it comes into Pebble Beach. It's really starting to slough, so we've been in contact with federal highways in regarding to some funding that might be available, some emergency funding, so we're hoping to hear back any day on that, and then a follow-up geotech. So it's all gonna come together right about the same time, so it's really good timing on that.
Great.
So to answer your question, you know, in short, yes, we'll work with that. We'll make sure we take all those considerations into account.
Thank you.
Alright, if you have any other questions for Mr. Weir? Alright, thank you very much. We'll open it up. We have any public comment regarding this development of the project initiation documents for Pebble Beach Drive Pedestrian Improvement Project? That's a lot of Ps. Alright, no public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Then we are looking for a motion to approve this professional services contract with Green Dot.
I move to approve a professional services contract with Green Dot Transportation Solutions in the amount of $31,984 to prepare the project initiation documents for a pedestrian improvement project on Pebble Beach Drive between Sixth Street and Preston Island.
Alright, we have a motion. Do you have a second?
Seconded.
Oh, we got a bunch of them. Very good. Motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, alright. Mr. Weir, you're still up. Clearly, I was mistaken. You are highly skilled.
Well, I don't know.
You're just running through these things, and I appreciate it.
Might lead to the other. Yes, no, that's what happens when I go on vacation for a little bit, they all stack up to the next meeting, so apologize.
Yeah, it's alright. Nope, no worries.
Yeah, so before you, on this particular item, is the memorandum of agreement regarding the joint acquisition of the use of a sewer pipeline inspection camera. Yes, so this is, this is obviously a tool that we have needed for some time. The county had owned a camera in the past, but it had since broken a number of years ago, so we really have no tool, no piece of equipment to inspect the pipelines that we have all throughout the city. The infrastructure is obviously miles long. I think there's 60 miles of sewer mains throughout the city and county, and probably 20 or 30 miles of storm drains. So the city and county jointly asked for a, some grant funding from the Emergency Management Association. We received a Homeland Security Grant for this in the amount of $30,000. So with that, a camera such as this costs around $90,000. So when we asked the Emergency Management Association for the grant, the thought was that they could give 30, the city would then put in 30, and the county would then put in 30. So that's really what's before you tonight, is to formalize that memorandum of agreement that sets all the stipulations for a piece of equipment that's funded through a grant, as well as funded by the city and county jointly. So with this agreement, the basic stipulation, the city will be the owner of the camera. It'll be stored at our corporation yard. The primary reason for that is because we maintain the CSA as well, so as far as us going out on emergency type of situation in the middle of the night, it's gonna be our crews that are called. The county would have joint access to this camera, obviously, so in case they needed to use it, contact us. Obviously, they can use it at any time. The city will be responsible for coordinating and scheduling, you know, all the availability of the particular camera. Maintenance activities, as far as any repair type costs or anything like that, will be split jointly between the city and county unless it exceeds $5,000. Then at that point, it would have to just be in writing that each entity agrees that we do want to spend this money on the camera, and then we proceed with the maintenance of the camera. Other than that, we're looking forward to getting this memorialized. We're looking forward to getting the purchase order out to the particular vendor and getting the camera in our possession.
Alright, Mr. Weir, why don't you just, for the public and for the council, why don't you just give us a couple of highlights of why this expenditure is something we could really use within our community?
You know, pipelines, they're obviously, they're underground. We don't have access to them, so in the, so if we look at storm drains, for example, you can, you can look at a storm drain. If we had a good inspection program, we could go look at it, be proactive on it, and so it doesn't fail and create the sinkhole like we saw on Cooper Street, or like Brookings saw up on the highway. Margie Street in regard to the, you know, the sewer manhole. All those sort of failures, we had a good camera and we had a good inspection program, we can be proactive on it and then plan for it instead of dealing with the emergency at the time. So that's the, that's the primary use of something like that. We're also, we received part of the grant as part of the Emergency Management Association in dealing with emergencies in regard to terrorism. So if, say, we did have a large explosion or tsunami or something like that, where we're dealing with an emergency situation, this camera would be vital in us assessing what the current state of the infrastructure is, and then helping us recover even quicker.
And why, you know, when we talked about that, my first thought was this whole idea of terrorism, we sometimes have a really different concept of that. The reality is even on a local level, a person who chose to do something in any of our sewer system lines could severely disrupt the services to hundreds, if not thousands, of people. So being able to pinpoint where those things are and the effect of them could be a really big deal going forward.
Yeah, yep. That, as well as just on an operational basis, you know, we talked about INI a lot, which is inflow and infiltration. So that's the groundwater actually getting inside the pipes. With a camera like this, you can go down, you video the pipes, you can find out where those little breaks are, where it's allowing all the groundwater to come in, and program a repair project to take care of that.
Is the goal to establish a specific protocol for the evaluation of our pipeline system? Have we started thinking about, now that, once we have this camera, that we can't have it just sitting in the courtyard? We need to have a regular, routine process of searching out the system?
Well, not only, you know, scheduling which pipelines get inspected and when, but how exactly that inspection takes place. So there's a certification called a NASCO certification, and which outlines how you do a pipe inspection and what size of defects are, lead to what sort of rating, so you have some sort of consistent evaluation across all your pipes. So we would implement something like that and then get that on a schedule. So we have a nice, robust evaluation of the system. We also will use GIS, which Fritz Ludeman, the IT administrator for the city, is very proficient in. And then we can go ahead and rate those pipes, get it on a map, and then use that to schedule the maintenance activities.
Perfect. Good deal. Alright, any other questions? Very good.
Just a comment that you mentioned while you were on vacation, that flows reach 600 and...
Six and a half million.
Six and a half million.
So, and yes, I believe today they were, they were under two, so, you know, we do have a little bit of INI when those storms come in, and...
Yeah. And just, I mean, so the people out there understand that our storm drains do not drain into our sewer treatment plant. That is, that is not where the storm flows come from. They are actually infiltrating in our sewer pipes, and obviously, we have a big problem that this camera is gonna make a big impact on it.
Well, definitely gives us, gives us the tools. On the same lines, several of our personnel recently went to some smoke test training, so that's another part that we can try to combat, the INI. So with smoke testing, basically, you plug off a certain part of the sewer system, then you flood it with smoke, and so as it comes out of storm drains or anything like that that might be misconnected, or like a yard drain, that'll tell us that we actually do have a cross connection there.
Very good. Alright.
Cross connections.
Bring it back up here. Do we have any public comment regarding this joint, this memorandum of agreement regarding this joint acquisition and use of a pipeline inspection camera? Alright, we'll close public comment, bring it back then, and I'll ask for a motion to approve this memorandum of agreement.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I think it's important that we read the entire recommendation because it is contingent upon this grant award and this funding, so if you would, please.
Approve a, I move that we approve a memorandum of agreement with the County of Delnor and the Delnor County Service Area Number One regarding, regarding the joint acquisition and use of a pipeline inspection camera contingent upon the receipt of the HSGP award.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. We have one last item, and that is a resolution authorizing city council member benefits, Resolution 2017-14. This is a correction, cleanup, adjustment, getting up to speed from a resolution from 2008. Council, wanna talk to us a little bit about this?
Yes, so California government code sets forth the rules for council member's salary and benefits. Salaries have a specific monetary cap on them, and they're required to be adopted by ordinance by the city council. They're also not allowed to be implemented until the next council election. Benefits are not governed quite so strictly. I guess you could say the council can adopt any schedule of benefits that chooses, so long as those same benefits are offered to city employees. So what has been the case for many years, and was the case in the 2008 resolution, is that the city council receive the same benefits as the Crescent City Management Employees Association. This resolution continues that practice. The difference is that the 2008 resolution had a variety of clauses that are either, at this point, irrelevant or unlawful, and so we wanted to clean that up. The other thing is that the resolution did not address the change that came in our new MOUs, including the CCMEA MOU, which was the opt-out option if you were not taking advantage of the city's insurance plan. The council does not have the option of getting that in cash as employees do, because that would be considered salary and would fall under the ordinance and the monetary restrictions and all that. But you can receive it into, and place it into a deferred compensation account, and that would still be considered a health benefit and not a, and not salary. So that's an explanation of what is before you.
Alright, do we have any questions?
No questions. Just to be clear, we're not voting ourselves in a raise.
No, but it is, it is important that the council is clear on what Rice just explained, and that is, is if you are not taking the health benefits, the $700 opt-out that we provided in our most recent MOUs is available to be placed into like a 457 plan by you. So if you, provided that you meet the requirements, and one of the first requirements, obviously, is that you have to be in a approved group insurance program. You can't just have personal insurance on your own, but if you're in a group policy already, then you can take that opt-out of $700, and you can go in and see Deb Snodgrass, and she can give you the paperwork, and that money can be placed into a 457 plan in your name. That's, you have the same benefit option that we have, that we provided to our employees. The difference is, is that you cannot take it as cash, but you can take it as a benefit that way. And if you have any questions about that, feel free to come in and discuss that with HR payroll, and they'll walk you through that. And it will have no impact on our budget. It may have impact from a, from an actual cost, but it will have no impact on our budget because we budget as if everybody takes the health benefits. So that's in our budget as if all of us are taking that benefit. That's in the budget. We don't reduce the budget based on who takes it or doesn't take it. It's in the budget. So if we assume that everybody was taking health benefits, that would be the budgetary cost. Anytime anybody doesn't take them, if, even if they were opting out, it's less than half of the, even if they were taking it as a 457, it's half of what it would be if they were in the system, so...
I'm just trying to understand it. So it's not, is it like a health savings account?
No, no, no. It's just a retirement account.
A retirement account?
457 is a governmental investment account.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And so feel free to come in, City Hall, and they'd be happy to walk you through that if you have any questions. But we're tightening up the resolution, making it consistent with our current MOUs, along with all appropriate government codes. Alright, any other questions? Comments? Public comment? No public comment, then we'll bring it back to the council, and we need a motion to approve this resolution, 2017-14.
I move we approve and adopt Resolution 2017-14, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Crescent City, providing for health and welfare benefits and retirement benefits for members of the city council.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Keim? Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor and Score?
Yes. Very good. We have come to the end of our regular agenda. We do have a, a couple of, while we have our regular reporting out, do we have any other legislative matters? I will just say that, that even though Chief Menzel was not able to be here, we talked at length, and he did express to me, because I know Councilmember Greenow has asked about this, and we did reach out to both the sheriff as well as the chief of police on weighing in on SB 54. And in my conversation with Chief Menzel, he, he did express his opposition to SB 54 from a law enforcement standpoint. I have always believed that this is a law enforcement issue and that, that they need to be weighing in on this, and while that may not be something, we're taking official action on his recommendation, I will just tell you that, that he shared with me that he just feels like that is going to create some problems that, that will make it difficult for them to do their job. I think that the sheriff has expressed a similar opinion. If we want to continue this and get them to put something in writing, I think that we're certainly able to do that, but it just in, you know, in reference to your questions, Mr. Greenow, that's just an update that, that I can give you in my conversations with the chief.
Okay. Thank you.
And it may be...
If, if they can come up with a letter or, that would be awesome.
Okay.
I would put my name on that in a second.
All right. Anything else from a legislative standpoint? Alex, anything?
Not, not at this meeting. I'll make sure to have something at the next one.
All right. City manager report, council directives, gave the one directive already regarding the procedures for the, anybody that might request a waiver or portability of their sewer or water connection. I do have one other item that's placed here under council directives, and I have, I have discussed this with staff, I've discussed this with county staff, and so the, the Emergency Operations Director, who, let me read you this because our clerk provided this to me so I can just make sure I get it right. The Emergency Operations Center Director, EOC, has the authority and responsibility to direct all EOC activity. The director may delegate authority to members of the general staff. In Delnor County, the county administrative officer and the city manager usually share this authority. We currently do not have a city manager to share this authority, and given the fact that we are not certain exactly when an interim city manager would be in place to fulfill this role, the question was presented to me, do we appoint someone specifically as our EOC director? In talking to CAO Serena about this and talking with Mr. Weir, and I've talked to our clerk, Kimmy Scott, I, I, I know that there is a sense that, that the city needs to, to appoint someone. I will just simply say this, our city staff, key individuals of our city staff are all integral parts of the whole EOC process. Mr. Weir is a, is a kind of a person who's key in the field. Ms. Scott is a, is our public information officer. We have key people involved. Our chief of police is going to be part of this team that is going to be looking at managing a emergency situation, as will our chief of police. My personal opinion as, as mayor at this point in time is to simply confer our, our, permission for county administrative officer Jay Serena to act as EOC director if we have a need to operate the EOC. Prior to us naming a city manager, I have full confidence that, that, that Mr. Serena will represent this entire community, and that is, that is my opinion. I would certainly weigh, allow council, I mean, the, yeah, the council to weigh in on that concept of whether or not they feel comfortable with that, but that's, that's my recommendation.
I agree with your recommendation. I think Mr. Serena would, both has the ability and the, the desire to do the best thing for both the county and the city, so I would echo your sentiment that he would be a, a good choice to have in the EOC on our behalf.
Okay. Anything else?
This would be a limited time thing, so once we get the city manager...
Yeah. This is only, would only be until we have a city manager.
He would be placed in that position.
Or interim, an interim city manager would fall into that place immediately upon their, upon their hire.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing as to how it's the only comparable position in the community to a city manager, it makes a lot of sense to do so. The only person that has that overall government experience and management position.
Okay. I don't know exactly, Ms. Rice, can you give me some assistance on what, what would be the appropriate action to, for us to take in that regard?
Let's see. On the agenda, it states appointment of city EOC director, so my suggestion would be to approve the appointment of county CAO Jay Serena as the EOC director on behalf of the city.
All right. Does that need to come in the form of a motion, or does that come just as appointment?
Yes. I'd put it on the form of an emotion, please.
All right. Well, then I, since it's my recommendation, I will make that motion, make a motion that we appoint CAO Jay Serena as the EOC director representing the city in lieu of our city manager until one is selected.
Second.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
Nope.
Close public comment, bring it back to the council. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor and Score?
Yes. Very good. All right. Reports, concerns, referrals, travel, training, who's first? Who wants to go first?
I can, I can go.
All right, Alex. It's all yours, man.
On the 19th, I attended the Senior Center Board of Directors meeting. We had our annual meeting, which is a lunch that we have with all the members of the Senior Center. There, we had a public hearing on CDBG and CSGG funding, or CDSG funding. Eighty-two percent of the Senior Center is funded from the federal government. I just really wanted to hammer that point home because of potential budget cuts coming down. On the 22nd, I attended the Rocky Peterson Memorial dedication, and on the 28th, I went to the COAT committee, and after that, it was quiet.
All right. Councilmember Keim?
I have been out of town. I missed you all at your last meeting. I was traveling for Easter to go visit my family. It was great. I've attended a transportation meeting, some interesting things happening with the 101 and Leggett. Actually, when we were returning from Easter, we had to go through Medford because it was closed on the 101. And, let's see, we have a upcoming airport authority meeting coming up. The last one was canceled.
Is that Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah. So, we'll be just...
And what time is that on Thursday?
Well, let me see. Can't remember. Me, well, I think they had to quiz me.
Twelve questions.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock on Thursday.
Two o'clock on Thursday.
Right here at the Quinn Center.
May 4th.
Well, I think that, the reason I ask you is because it's, obviously, it's an important thing, because the airport authority is going to be considering the EAS, EAS bids and supporting one or, or the other, and I think that as many people as possible to be here, including us if we're available, I think is, is a, is a good thing.
Absolutely. And, and that's the reason I mentioned that there's an upcoming airport authority meeting. There isn't a survey, they, they did, I confirmed this with, with Susan this evening. They don't have a survey out there for the community, but they have asked people to write letters about their opinions regarding Penn Air or the boutique air, that they have different, two different contracts that are available, so that, that'll be coming up on Thursday.
Okay.
Make a decision.
Yeah. We look forward to that, and I think that we will likely, based on the opinion of the airport authority, try to support their recommendation, and we will likely have on our next agenda a, a letter in support of, of what our airport authority is, thinks is our best, so represent us well.
And what time is that meeting, for the public?
Two o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah. That's about it.
All right. Okay.
Well, sir, I, with you, attended the victim's luncheon out at Pelican Bay. Kind of a moving ceremony. In addition to that, I also attended the Rocky Peterson Memorial. My Redwood Coast Transportation Meeting was canceled. Prior to the, to the dedication, the night before, went out and had a little meeting with the Daughters of the American Revolution ladies that came up to do the memorial. Great group of ladies, and glad that they took the initiative to, to do that memorial. It was a great, great thing.
Very good.
That's it for me.
All right. Mr. Greenow?
I did not have any meetings in the last two weeks, except for our special meeting today. We met at Crescent City Fire Hall and discussed building and planning permit fees, cultural center fees, and sewage capacity charges, and it was a very positive meeting today. We looked, we looked at a lot of different options, a lot of different solutions. I'm excited going forward.
All right. Very good.
That's all I have to say.
I, Pro Tim Short mentioned the victim's luncheon, which I referenced earlier with presenting an award to Benita Cabrera. It was a, it was a really good event, and I appreciate very much Pelican Bay for putting that on and bringing that awareness that we need to recognize those who have been victims, and that the courage that it takes to sometimes stand up and, before someone and acknowledge that you've done this to me and you need to be held accountable for it. Did attend the Chamber Mixer at Coast Central Credit Union, which was always a really good event. Had a meeting with the advocacy committee of the Chamber of Commerce, talking about some specific issues in our community and Chamber's concerns, and some of those affect us in the city, and so they wanted some of my input on that. The Rocky Peterson Memorial dedication was fantastic. I can't say enough good words about our city staff or the crews that helped get the memorial done, or, for the crew there that, that morning. I mean, it was, it was a great event. We had at least 50?
Probably.
Fifty people there for that event Saturday morning. We had people who came all the way from San Diego for the Daughters of American Revolution. They're higher-ups to be here to support our local chapter. We had a nice luncheon afterwards, which was great. And an opportunity on the 27th to meet with a, a couple of young men from Corbin University in Salem. It's a Christian liberal arts college, and they were, the, one of the students was working on a project that had to do with the, how faith-based organizations can work with governmental institutions to try to accomplish common goals. And somebody said, "Well, you ought to ask the pastor who's also the mayor of Crescent City." So, they came by to just ask me a whole bunch of questions about how do I see the ability to, to partner together with faith-based organizations, such as the Interfaith Community Group that has done a lot of community service, and was very pleased to tell them that, as far as I'm concerned, government doesn't get in the way of any of our religious efforts here and back. The city of Crescent City is providing opportunities for people who are involved with different religious groups to have a place to give their people some opportunities to serve their community. And so, it was, it was really good to talk to these two young men. Had a Chamber Executive Board meeting, attended the Community Outreach Assisted Team, COAT meeting with Mr. Follman, and, and Mr. Follman took over and ran the show and did a fantastic job. I don't have to go anymore now, and he's in charge. I like that idea a lot. And then on Saturday, I, I went down and volunteered for the afternoon for Pints for Nonprofits. Proceeds for that were going to St. Jude's and to the fair, and that was a, that was an interesting time. It was very busy. There were people coming and going. I hope that it didn't affect the home show and people going to the home show, because I have a feeling when people came through the, the entrance, it was home show or a room full of beer. But we encourage people, once they finish enjoying their, their tastings, to go over to the home show and find something that you need to, to improve your own home and increase economic development here in our community by beautifying your residence.
Speaking of room full of beer, what was it that you were volunteering to do?
I, I...
I just wondered. Do you want us to report out at a time for a beer?
I sold tickets, Mr. Short. I, I, I made sure that it would probably be most appropriate for me to not pour beer, but to simply sell tickets on the behalf of, of a nonprofit. Yes. Thank you. All right. We have anything else?
No, sir.
All right. We will stand adjourned until next Monday at 5:00. We will be in special session, closed session prior to our budget workshop right here at this place. Thank you. Good night.